All right, we are recording and just so everybody knows before I call to order. This is the first time the Board of Selectmen have met in person since March of 2020. And we are in a, we're going to be adopting the hybrid format. So you can, you can see we've, we're spaced out. We have one guest here in the room with us and then some folks who are going to be zooming in. So we will continue this format for the near future. So at this point, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen to order for our regular meeting on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So first order of business is public comments. Anybody online have anything to share? You can unmute yourself. And I don't, don't see anything, so we'll move on to correspondence. I don't think we have any, no, no way of correspondence. First electors report, I'm just going to touch on a few highlights that I put up in today's community newsletter. And I just gave a copy to my colleagues and we sent this out today via e-news. It's posted on the town website and we sent it out via the town's social media page. But basically the news is unfortunately, we thought we were going in the right direction. We were going in the right direction with regard to the COVID crisis. Yeah, we had gotten the town's infection rate down to a low four weeks ago of 0.2%. And the highest that Bethel was a year ago was up to about 12.9%. So going down below 1% was, was a great achievement. People were really paying attention and doing the things they needed to do to keep themselves safe. But since then, we've climbed back first to 0.5% for a couple of weeks and 0.9. As of last Thursday's report from the Department of Public Health, we're at 1.2. So this is due to the, what's called the Delta variant. And it's a, it's a great concern. I had a very lengthy chat with, with the folks from the Chamber of Commerce today because this is going to affect Bethel businesses. If we don't really as a community work harder to keep ourselves safe and keep our families safe. It's more transmissible than the common cold. It's actually easier to catch than a cold. It is highly prevalent in our area, but the good news is the vaccine is still, the current vaccines, especially the Pfizer and the Moderna are still highly effective in preventing a person from getting sick with the, even with the Delta variant. And if you do get sick and you're fully vaccinated, there is about a 99% chance that, above 99%, that you will experience nothing more than a bad case of the flu. You will not be hospitalized and not be put on a ventilator. So that just brings us to the point that at this point, more, well, more than 40% of the town of Bethel is still unvaccinated, at least not fully vaccinated. The way that breaks down is in the 12 to 15 age group, we have a vaccination rate of 57%. And that's actually very good because up until just recently, the vaccine was not available for people in the 12 to 16 age bracket. So that's coming up very quickly. But then you go to the next group, which is 16, age 16 to 44, 63.4% are fully vaccinated with both shots. 45 age to 64, it goes up to 60, about 68%. And then above 65 age group, it goes to 81% and still going up. So it, it is concerning that those middle numbers are still in the 60s. Because the, in order to, you know, what the science says, as I'm sure Paul, you're very familiar with this, you got to get up into the 80 to 90% range to reach that herd immunity. So I think we have to work harder as a community to get the news out that the vaccine is effective, it's safe. It saves lives, it prevents people from contracting the disease and spreading it to others. So I'll leave it at that and I'll just ask my colleagues if they have anything to add or any questions.
I'm just going to ask you about those effects that you just gave us, so thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, we haven't met, like you said, 15 months here. There's some things I don't, that I think we should be addressing. And I'd like to add about three points to our three issues tonight, to tonight's meeting. One is the status of the police station firing range. Last time the Board of Selectmen met, we met at the site and there was some testing going on. And we were promised that we were going to be involved in the second phase when the building was going to be totally, I guess, waterproofed, okay? Haven't heard nothing on this one, the status. Okay, second one is I'd like to recall the Charter Revision Commission. This, I don't think should take too long because if we recall the same individuals, nothing has changed. I don't think we want nothing to change. I don't think we want to go through another 18 months, so I'd like to discuss that tonight. And the third issue is a sort of a status review of Rockwell Johnson School. The, the list of the punch list. I, I received from one of our constituents, you know, some concerns. And I, I think we need to address this since we're just at the point of opening up the schools completely. So those three issues I'd like to bring up tonight.
We wanted, you want to discuss them now as part of the selectmen's report?
That'd be fine with me if it's easier.
Okay.
Sure, let me start with the, the police station. As I said earlier, Mr. Straybridge and I, we were at the, when they were testing the, the ceiling of the police firing range. They shot water at the walls and we did, we saw some leaks in the areas where it wasn't sealed, but we also saw leaks at the base. And, and I guess the, the building committee, okay, the ad hoc building committee was supposed to get back to us now. And that's well over a couple of weeks and I really don't know what's occurring there. And last time I spoke to the police captain, he says he's not going to install any equipment, so he's absolutely sure that that place is sealed from the moisture that was seeping through the walls. I think my suggestion is that we perhaps at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, bring in Nancy and the committee.
Yep.
Or if there's something ongoing between now and then, I would like to be part of that review at the police station that they're going to be testing. Okay, Rich, I don't know, have you heard anything?
Yeah, well, I, I know a little bit because I, you know, drive by there a lot. And I know that they have did the primer and I think they've gotten one coat of the sealer on the entire building. There was some discussion about that water seepage on the bottom that we saw. And he felt that that was coming in from the non-protected area and just sweeping across the bottom.
But they haven't dug the base yet.
No, they, they felt that it was from the water seeping in on the other end of the building.
Through the block.
And just following that, that channel that they talked about that's on the bottom. So they were, you know, and this is my recollection of the conversation that they felt once it got sealed and they tested again, that there wouldn't be any problems with that.
No, we'll have to see when they.
Yeah, so when, once, once everything gets all done, there will be another test of the product that.
Okay, let's, just.
But after the, after the test, there was no leakage in the wall where they did the tests.
Yeah, but, you know, they promised us that they were going to have us there when they're going to, when the, the second seal is done. We're going to water test that whole building.
Okay, yeah.
So I'd like to, you know, perhaps sit down with Nancy or if something's going to be happening between now and the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, just advise, you know, me, if Rich wants to come, I'd like to see.
Okay, well, I know they, they coated the wall and there's a curing period, they put the second coat on. And so that, the last I, I spoke with, with the Chair of the Building Committee, they were waiting for the curing period to end before they put the second coat on. Then that has to cure and then you have to test. So I think, I think this is a good time to, to go over there and take a look at it.
Okay, second point here, recall of the Charter Revision Commission. I've been, I received, you know, from my side of the aisle, okay, I'll be perfectly honest about that. They want, and I want basically to have recalled this Charter Revision Commission. It was nobody's fault, it was sort of our fault a little bit, but you know, be that as it may, the COVID crisis screwed it all up. And I don't think there's any new provisions that we want. We want to resurrect that and go for 18 months reviewing it. So you know, I know most of the people would like to get this thing over and done with. And if we do it correctly, in other words, if we would recall the Charter Revision Commission members, you know, they would reconvene in September. I don't think it would take them more than one or two meetings to just re-present it back to the Board of Selectmen here. And we could probably might even be able to squeeze it on the municipal election. We said that because the last time, last time that when we had Charter Revision, it was at a municipal election, it was part of that ballot. I remember that.
Well, I don't think that's possible if you're talking about this, this coming municipal election. I think because they have, if you read the statute, the statute makes clear that there has to be, there has to be public hearings held. So if they're going to schedule public hearings, they've got time restraints. Then it's got to come back to the Board of Selectmen. So I, I think, and it's got to be ready to go like the beginning of September. That leaves a month. I don't think it's going to happen, Paul. And can I, can I ask Paul, Paul, can we backtrack a minute here? What was the chief talking about? What equipment is he not going to install? He's got equipment for the firing range?
No, he hasn't purchased it yet.
Well, you said that he indicated that he wasn't going to put any equipment in until it was resolved. So that leads me to believe in the listeners that he's got equipment ready to go. And as far as I know, there isn't any.
I didn't mean that, Marty. All I meant was the fact that when I spoke to the chief, he said he's not going to pursue getting equipment, okay? Or purchasing equipment until that's called.
Right. But like I said, the charter, I don't think it's possible to get it in, in time for November.
Well, I'd like to pursue it, get this to go over with. There was a lot of time spent on this, you know, I know.
Well, okay, that, there, there was, but on, on the other hand, you know, then it's a process where there's, there's a give and take on both sides. So Marty, you're, when, when does the ballot have to be done?
I think, I think it's got to be done like the first week of September, if I remember right. I'll find out for sure. I mean, there's no reason why you can't discuss putting it back together and getting ready to go. And if it's got to be beyond that date, but the problem with it is, you know, you've got the different requirements for the votes. If it's not on with a regular municipal or state election, then you have a higher standard in order to get it through. And I don't know if we can wait another whole year.
Will we look into the time frame to see if it can be done? And I, I don't think, you know, with the one.
But you know, fine, let's look into the timeframe, I grant you that. But at the same time, you know, 18 months you spend on this thing.
Yeah.
COVID interfered, it's time for us to bring this back to the table and let the people vote on it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's put that on the agenda for the next one. We'll look at the timelines. We can even have a special meeting if that's necessary.
Well, my, my last issue is status of the Rockwell Johnson School punch list. I received something like about 14 different pages and compliments of Nancy. It was Nancy's, okay, it was submitted to one of my, our constituents here. He was concerned. I think as a Board of Selectmen, we really shouldn't find out whether or not, you know, everything has been completed. Right now, all we, we, all of us went to those two schools. They're beautiful, no question about it. There's a lot of things that needed to be finished up. And I, I, like I said, I have a couple of people who are saying, hey, Paul, did they do this? Did they do that? I don't know.
You know, I, I know who your constituents are because I.
I'm sure they've talked to you too.
These are, these are issues. First of all, I have reviewed the punch list. There are hundreds and hundreds of items on them. The vast majority, I could almost count on two hands, the things that are still open, most of them are closed. I mean, like 99% of them are closed. I've gone and looked at it, I spot checked a few things and they're, they're fine. I think that the individuals who are concerned should take their concerns to the building committee because that's where this is. At, at this stage, the building committee is still responsible for supervising that work, closing out the punch list. And then really reporting back to the Board of Ed to make sure that they are going to accept the building, that they met the educational specs.
But we, they have not come to before the Board of Selectmen. I guess at one time we said we'd like to have a monthly or bi-monthly meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll have the committee report to us and specifically review the punch list for the next meeting. Okay?
Those are my three issues here.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item number five, consideration of acceptance of the meeting minutes from July 20th, 2021. I'll indicate a motion to approve those, so. Okay, any questions, comments, any mistakes, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, curious. And now.
Marty's generally the one to catch something.
What's that?
Marty's the generally the one to catch us something.
Yeah. All right, so we have some very exciting news tonight that you may have heard about because this was presented to the Board of Ed at their last meeting. I'm pleased to welcome Mike Kozlowski from the firm of.
Claris Design Bill.
Claris Design Bill. And there is a donation that is pending that is very exciting for the folks of Bethel. So Mike, welcome, I'm going to turn the floor over to you and we're going to share the screen so the folks from home can, can watch what's going on.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, Mike Kozlowski with Claris Design Bill. The name sounds familiar. We were involved with the track and field training facility adjacent to the high school where the old tech courts used to be. In that same kind of spirit of a project, I'm here tonight to present to you what we like to call Project Astro. Kind of just a cute little name to talk about a turf field project that a, a private donor is looking to, to donate on campus. And I'll, I'll run through these kind of who, what, where, why really quick. Again, private donor shall be named that for the foreseeable future if the project is accepted and we move forward. Either myself or another representative of Claris Design Bill will be kind of the face of the project for the foreseeable future. What is the project? It's the installation of a new multi-sport turf complex. I know we've talked about turf projects in the past here at campus. Shortly I'll go over at the location, which is the existing middle school baseball and softball fields. We'll have maps to show you what we're talking about as well as rendering. When we would like to do it, we would like to start ideally as soon as possible, but spring of 2022, carrying us all the way through the summer to the beginning of the 2022 fall semester. Ideally May first would be a, a great starting point. And the reason being is it, it's not just a normal turf project or some other components. Normally when these municipal turf projects, whether it's other schools or private schools, they turf a field, that's it. It's, it's, it's done from June to August. But as you'll see shortly, there's a couple of other components that we would like to be able to start ahead of time. The question when I talk to people about this project is why? Well, twofold, and why it's not the football field currently and why it's being proposed where it is. Is it, it's a variety of sports. Not only, as you'll see in the drawings, can we get the soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, but we're going to be at the, the middle school baseball and softball field. So those are going to be turfed as well. So that means more athletes get a chance to play. It's two times the amount of turf as, as what the football field would be. More time on the field, so when springtime rolls and the, the spring thaw is happening, the fields aren't soggy. There's, there's twice as much room for athletes to practice. And at the end, it results in better trained athletes for the town of Ethel. Right here, I'm going to just kind of give you a, a, a map of the existing conditions, right? So we all are very familiar with, we're all very familiar with the, with the campus over here. With just to orient ourselves, we've got a Bethel High School. We put the track and field here over the old tennis courts, Google or things, update their images a little bit. We've got the track and football field. And what we're talking about really is, is right here in between the high school and the, and the middle school is this baseball and softball field. So I'm going to zoom in kind of on that location for now. Currently, the field is, is tight on the baseball field. It's, it's pretty shallow in center field. If there's a baseball game going, it's hard to get any other sport kind of going on the rest of the field. Same thing with softball is a little easier because the fence is a little closer. But it's used for lacrosse, it's used for soccer, it's used for field hockey. As you can see in this image, this must have been the fall time, there were some smaller soccer fields kind of ghosted in here with the lines. We are also proposing to have lines for additional youth fields as well. Going to scroll to the next image, which is kind of a, just a jazzed up version of what you just saw there. So very similar on the surface. You can see pretty much all of that was flat area is, is now going to be turf. The infield for both baseball and softball will also be turf, it will be a clay colored turf. The pitching mound and batter's box, however, would be natural clay. It's just safer that way. However, there are a lot of school districts, not only at the high school, but at the collegiate level, Division One sports, moving towards this type of playing surface. Again, it gives you a, a more playable surface for, for other sports. Kind of centered in, in between the softball and baseball fields is where we're going to locate a majority of the activities that are going to happen down here, meaning lacrosse, field hockey and soccer. Right now, our athletes are training on our natural grass, they're playing their home games on natural grass. Especially when it comes to field hockey and soccer, the ball moves so much faster on turf. So now they'll be able to practice on this area, be able, be better equipped for when they're playing other towns within the conference and within the state itself. Not shown are the additional youth fields that would start on left field line of the softball field moving its way over. We, we predict we could probably get about four or five youths field, which is great. I know we host a, the Bethel Soccer Committee hosts a, a, a tournament. This will be a great asset for that. And then over here in the outfield and center field and right field of the baseball field and green lines, we'll have a 50 yard by 50 yard practice football field. So that way, they will also be able to get a chance to practice on turf. So when they go and play other towns, they will have a little bit more, a better feel for the, for the playing service. The only other slight adjustments to this, which is different from a topography standpoint, is the location of the baseball field. The baseball field in this proposal actually gets pushed back about 10 to 15, maybe 20 feet into the hill. And that's yet to be determined because we haven't engineered everything correctly. But we are going to try to get as much space back into the hill as possible. We'll do that with the retaining wall with the, where the backstop is. The dugouts will also be set into the hill. I'm going to show them some zoomed in images shortly. And that gives us a more playable outfield for, let's say, for whatever reason, the high school baseball field is too rough to play. They will host a high school game down here.
Yeah, what's the, what's the distance to center field in this?
Previously, it was under 300 feet. I think we are well over, we're, we're probably around 320. It's still very shallow for a center field, but in the alleys and the right, right center, left center, it gets a little bit more depth there.
Can that hill be filled in more?
So I will say, we did approach the donor with that as a concept. It was our first go around. There was a fine line of what was going to be sent and whatnot. And what I've been told and instructed to, we could certainly do, look at any other additional items to this project. It would then just have to be kind of where the line of division from what is donated for what the town might chip in. And I'll get, there's another part of that as well that I'll talk about. But you see here in the hill between the, the, the football field and this lower field we're talking about, we're talking about a 500 seat capacity bleacher system with a press box and also conduits for four lighting locations, light poles.
Do you know where the transmission lines go down in that service road? Are they further off to the service road or are they in that road itself?
We don't know that yet, that's part of our next steps. But we do know that we either have a transit, if we don't have anything there, we have a transformer up here by the high school we could pull off of or by the track house.
Yeah, I know, I've had the, the big high voltage lines. They're down in that driveway location, they're in the lower.
Down here.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, oh, they are not mapped out here at this. And we don't anticipate coming in contact or moving or anything like that. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about just regular power coming through this driveway. Another thing to note, to get a more playable surface, and what I mean by that is the soccer field is the widest that you'll see here, it's the white lines. A playable surface would require, I think, 10 or 15 feet of runoff between the edge, the end line and running out of turf space. So in order to get this field to be by all standards, accurate dimensions, we would be proposing a retaining wall, tightening up what is the current driveway to get a little bit more playing surface. So that combined with, with the baseball diamonds shifting back really gets us a lot more. It's just small changes to the topography, but it gets us a lot more playing surface here in the middle. I'm going to zoom in here a little bit. Again, this is just kind of a quick representation of how we think the bleachers could be sent to that hill. A lot of engineering needs to be determined still, but we're, we're in for a 500, again, 500 seat capacity with its own press box. So with that, an audio system, controls for the lights. So any game that is played down here on this field would be the equal to be playing up at the football field. So whatever sport it is, now you can actually do two games at night if you really wanted to.
Is there a light with the project?
There is light with the project. So we are, we, as you can see kind of here, right here in this rendering here and on the opposite side that the participants are blocking, there would be, there's a four post lighting system that has been proposed with the project. This is just to zoom in, as you can see, the dugout's kind of, currently they sit on the flat portion, we're setting them back into the hill. I forgot to mention, I apologize, where there's an addition of a paved way from this field down to the lower practice soccer field that I think, I believe is not really held for any game activity, more for practice. And that's due to ADA access. Unfortunately, the road we're proposing will not be ADA accessible. It's still, it's just too steep of a, of a hill to climb. But it does provide a safer surface to get down, to wheel things down, whether it be a golf cart for injuries or, or any other things that need to be brought down there. Softball field's smooth slightly, but not much. It's pretty much in the same spot that it is currently. Again, you can see one of the four post lights here. Now, the lighting proposed really is only to light the main field, by main field, I mean the soccer, lacrosse, field hockey field. It is not meant to light the softball or baseball field. Now, this is not our first meeting within the town. We had a private meeting with a few select people, then we, we met with the Board of Education. I've met with Park and Rec to just give them a heads up. And things have been brought up that this might be an ideal opportunity to light the softball field. Currently, we did, we have a lit baseball field in town for the, for the high school. We also have, the Mitchell Park has lights. We don't have lights on any softball field besides the men's league softball field. So to include a softball field here that has lights will go a long way with just, you know, having equitable sports for both male and female. I'm going to run through a couple of images, it's, it's the products that we're talking about for this project. Field turf, I'm pretty sure they've given a presentation in the past. The, the proposed project here is an encapsulated rubber system, it is not a coconut system. This is an example of a multi-sport field that they have done in the past where you can see the multiple lines of every different sport. They were in a much tighter confined area, so there's a lot of things going on there. But it just goes to show you how it is doable with the different colored lines. And that's what we're proposing for our field. And we'll also have a nice big V at the center as you saw in the rendering. This is just for anyone interested, the, the presentation will be made available, but this is just a quick typical section through what the field is, how the drainage works. We bring it down to a certain subgrade, meaning Claris and their subcontractors. The field turf comes in and then build it back up with their gravel and drainage system. So this is, this is kind of their typical system. And at the edges, you see here an eight inch concrete curb. That is what the turf ties into and acts as two parts. It's, it, it holds it together just like your normal carpeting in, within your house with the, with the, the strips with the nails sticking up. That holds the turf in, but it also provides an anchoring point for fencing. So there'd be all new fencing along this field as well, backstops is all as part of this project.
You'd be going in and escaping, so basically the, the level, the existing field, the, the.
The level, the existing field, the the level of the new field.
Correct, so we we're coming in, we're taking up the top soil, we estimate anywhere between twelve and eighteen inches. They would come in, build back up their base with the gravel, now, a typical. Uh, again, a lot of engineering needs to be done, but the typical system with the turf and the gravel base. Can really absorb a lot of water, I mean, you have to have almost a hundred year event for the thing to kind of flood. Now, the next step, as we'll talk about shortly, is getting into the engineering and looking at the water flow from the upper football field down to this field and that. What this field affects down, you know, downstream to the lower soccer field and beyond.
There's the field that you scraped above is built to raise that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it could be. Absolutely, save save some time and money that way. Uh, Southern Bleacher Company, uh, we could get bleachers from pretty much anywhere, but they've been kind enough to help us. At this point with pricing and with uh an idea of what the bleacher system's gonna look like. This is a similar setup, this was uh color code with blue for the particular school it was done. But ours would look very similar, probably done in a Princeton maroon color with the press box in the center there. Uh, but set into the hill similar to this project, so it's not like the. Football bleachers that we have currently that have a lot of open void space below, this will be sent to the hill nicely. Um, and it creates a a good viewing experience. Again, for anyone afterwards, you can see this is just a cross section of how a couple of details that will work. Uh, the final product kind of used called out that a big product I'll talk about is Musco Lighting. Um, it's kind of the golden standard for for field lighting, uh whether it's collegiate, uh professional or high school. I believe Moscow is what we have currently at the at the uh football field currently today. So it would be a similar system to that. Uh, look, two slides left, uh, the team effort, and what do we mean by that? There's been a couple of things that have been requested from the donor uh to go along with the project. One, it is to request for the use of any pledged money that was pledged towards the turf football field. Um, I understand that this isn't money sitting in a bank account, most of it is is people saying, hey. I'm willing to donate X amount of dollars towards this project. And speaking with the Board of Education and with the Athletic Department, um, they are willing to help kind of go around to all the donors who have pledged money. Um, ask them how they feel about this project and if they'd be willing to. And any sort of help would be greatly appreciated. Two, uh, I believe when the turf, uh, when the track project, the actual outdoor track and the uh the lighting was done. Um, and the track house, not the indoor track house, the outdoor track house, the town assisted with lighting, and you did a lease program. It was at, it was, it was requested that the town also assist with lighting here, and that's kind of where I talk about. Uh, how we may light the uh softball field and even the baseball field, so something to consider from the town perspective. It's been talked about that we would run conduit, we would run foundations for lighting, it would just simply be the town providing the lights for those for those locations. Three, similar to the track house, the indoor track and field training center. Um, which is why I'm here tonight, is a required lease line. What we want to do is create a lease line around the area similar to what we did previously. The donor would lease, went through their charitable organization, leased the property. Claris would then come in, be able to perform the work, non prevailing wage, uh frankly. That's how the budget is presented, that's that, that's kind of where we at with where where the donation would end up. So we're asking for you guys to please consider uh setting up a lease line for that. Lead times, we ask that we move expeditiously. Um, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the construction industry nowadays, but lead times for products are absolutely crazy. Um, for example, if I wanted to put up the same type of steel that the indoor track and field training center was. I used to be able to get that eighteen to twenty weeks, now that was ordered. They would engineer it, they would fabricate it, and it was shipped from Pennsylvania in eighteen to twenty weeks. Nowadays, if I do that, if I order that steel today, I'm not getting it till mid-August of of twenty twenty two, over a year lead time. So the turf, the lighting and the bleachers aren't that excessive, but lead times are increasing. Prices are increasing, so if we can get this approved in an expeditious manner, uh, we can lock in pricing. We can lock in the lead time with some with, you know, our estimated ship dates, and they'll be able to hold the materials for us. Uh, and again, as mentioned in the beginning, we would love to be able to start. Uh, construction uh in May twenty twenty two, again, it's twice the amount of turf than nor- doing a normal turf field over a summer project. We have a whole bleacher component coming into this, we're putting in conduit for lighting, we're pushing back. Uh, the baseball field, so creating dugouts that have underneath puddings and foundations, block walls. So we feel that the amount of time we're asking for is, if everything is doable, we just really need to be able to start May first. Already having preliminary conversations with the Athletic Department, so then the Parks and Rec, so they can plan accordingly. Their schedule of the usage of what they normally would use those fields for, um, and then plan accordingly throughout the rest of town, at least for that time period. Final slide here, uh, next steps, uh, appropriate town meetings, like I mentioned earlier. Uh, we've been, we've been to the Board of uh Education, we're we're before you now as the Board of Selectmen. Um, planning and zoning would be kind of a a a future meeting in our in our uh. Part of this project, uh, again, preliminarily met with. Uh, Beth Kavanaugh to give her an update about the project from planning and zoning. Um, but the, what we need to do pretty quickly is get a geotechnical report. And basically, we would get a little track kind of skid steer type setup with a drilling ring on it, we go out to the field and drill a bunch of holes. Now, it's not invasive, we could go out with a mini excavator, but it's gonna make a mess. And then you gotta plant grass seed, a drilling uh rig fills about an eight inch hole. You know, it's gonna pat down this grass a little bit in certain spots, but they're pretty good when they drive it. What that'll tell us is the existing soil conditions underneath, um, as you guys know, it can get pretty soggy there. So that tells us that we have to go six, twelve, eighteen, or twenty four inches down with. Um, with the base material now. I have to be honest, and it comes back and we have to go thirty six inches and remove thirty six inches of the soil, there probably would be sacrifices in some of the scope of work here. Uh, but the the main scope is is the turf field. Um, so so again, we need to get that kind of work done with the permission of the town to go out there and 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 do a couple of those drills.
Have you given any consideration to look at any geotech information from when the middle school was built?
Uh, that is a great point, I can talk to the Engineering Department to get those, I know we have some from the uh track and field house, which is a little bit higher. I know the middle school was a little bit more on the same plank, but I, that is, that is a great suggestion, I will look at.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I I I remember this mic after you presented to the board. Malone and McBroom did a pretty extensive report when they were looking at the 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 fields in general, so I'll make sure you get a copy of that too. Cause I think they did some preliminary testing.
That would be fantastic, thank you. Another thing we would have to do pretty soon, probably, if if possible, the end of the summer, early start of the school year, is get updated survey. Um, it's just part of the process needed for for engineering purposes. Now, I have gotten some hard copy surveys from the, from Planning and Zoning Department, those certainly helped, we just have to take that. With a surveyor, verify the conditions and make sure it's okay. Now, all those bills, the geotechnical survey, obviously is taken care of by the donor, we just need your blessing to be able to do those things. And the final thing here, which we have done, is engage engineering, and there's engineering from the tip field turf perspective, they have their own engineers that help. Assist with the drainage calculation. We have Doug DeVesta, who is the uh civil engineer for the track house project, he's going to be assisting with this project as well. So we're kind of uh, we're at a point here where we really are are looking forward to get done, we do have a lot of time. But as I mentioned, at the same time, we would like to order materials sooner rather than later to lock in some competitive pricing, so. Um, in a nutshell, that's the presentation, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Can you back up one slide, but while you do that, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, let me ask you this, uh. We had a presentation, there was a turf field with a football area. Uh, the turf that you're considering as well as the under payment, the the rubber, is this the same thing that the Athletic Department wanted back then?
Uh, I believe back then, I've not privy to all the information, uh, there was discussion of whether it was gonna be encapsulated rubber, which is a safer system than the traditional rubber system. Versus a coconut infill system, now coconut infill uh substantially increases the uh cost of the uh material. It also has a about a fifty percent less lifespan before you have to replace it.
Yeah, we were looking at like ten years before that.
Yeah, so so the the regular maintenance here is a couple of times a year with the system comes two apparatuses that are towed behind. A tractor or a gator or a golf cart or something like that, um, it rigs all the, rigs it up, kind of re-levels everything out. And then it's suggested by filter uh that you hire a professional uh that comes in every three to four years. Uh, at the cost of about three to four thousand dollars per time. Uh, that comes in with the with a heavier machine and brings it all up, now, yes, after about twelve years, twelve plus years. Uh, depending on how well the field is, has been maintained, how well it wears. Um, there is some expense to replacing, not only the encapsulated rubber, because you're gonna lose some of that. But also taking a look at the actual carpet itself, uh, and the integrity of that, but a well-maintained system should last you. It does not put the gators, it's just the toe behind uh pieces, so, um, I know that, you know, in speaking with. Um, certain departments, you know, there are trackers in town, uh, whether, you know, whether it's a tracker that's used or if a gator is purchased. Uh, for other uses, not just this, uh, would be an ideal piece of the place.
What is the projected value of the uh, the projected cost?
For the project? Um, I was asked not to, um.
Okay.
Well, the lighting, I will tell you the lighting.
It was probably changed by tomorrow anyway.
Understood, I will tell you the lighting because we do have prices for lighting, um, and that includes. Um, uh, uh, the 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 bases, the furniture install of the lighting system is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's a four. Post system, you know, that is not additional lighting for the softball field or the baseball field. Um, in our price, then we have, you know, running conduit and 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 trenching for that stuff, uh, again, which would be provided. But the three twenty is the one number, I guess I could say, for the weight.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, Matt, I'm, uh, Mike, when we, when the, just to follow up on um Paul's question, because. We, it is one of the two products we looked at, Paul, when we looked at for the football field, we looked at the coconut, I I'm not sure what the technical term is for that. And then the encapsulated rubber, so it was one of the two that we looked at, and I think that 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 the encapsulated rubber. Has a little bit longer durability in terms of replacement, is that correct, Mike?
That is correct, it's it's actually a significant amount of time longer that it lasts.
Right, and you don't have to do as much annual maintenance, and most of, and I know Mark Karen's on. Most of the, most of the local high schools do use encapsulated um rubber, is that true, Mark?
Yeah, New Milford just did a, I think, three million dollar project with two turf fields and used the encapsulated and had it. Had, it's really been very successful, um. The things, the reason why we were looking at the organic was to, you know, prevent VOCs, the volatile organic. Chemicals from spreading, but the encapsulated rubber does, if you if you look at the research, it protects from that as well, so. Uh, a- and the other thing that it does is it's, it's a cooler product than regular crumb crumb rubber. Um, Masic put in the organic infill, and they've had some issues with it. When they've had heavy rain overflowing and and spreading the organic material where they've had to bring more in, it's. Uh, the athletic director's not really that happy with it, where the New Milford A D, I I've talked to them closely, and he's he's very happy with encapsulated rubber so far.
And I believe the organic product was relatively new when we were looking at it.
Correct.
So Mike, um, I, if you can prepare a a bottom line, what you would need from the town for this project?
Absolutely, and yes, we we certainly can, so and I could distribute that, uh, I could be sent out to you guys tomorrow. So you have a a a brief description of everything that's needed. But the big thing, like I said, um, is uh, you know, okay, the uh, for us, like, for example, last time we sat with. Uh, the attorney, we sat with Ben, uh, with our surveyor and our engineer to create the lease line, and then I believe we had to present that again. Uh, to you guys to approve that, um, so, you know, that's where we're at right now.
Um, Marty, uh, let let me ask a question, um. The I'm, uh, of the things that are up here, uh. Of course, we have no control over the pledge money, that's private. Um, I, assisting with the lights is something I would certainly support, but we can't get final approval, we can't. That's not ironclad, I would think tonight, the only thing we can do is vote to. Approve the concept and permit the testing and the uh legal work to begin, would that, would you concur with that, Marty?
Yeah, I think you could do that, I think that's the the right way to go.
Okay, all right. Um, they, do you guys have any other questions? Yes, thank you, so in that case, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the concept and. Grant permission to proceed to the next step, which would be uh creating the lease line and the uh engineering testing.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any other, any other discussion on that? And hearing none, those in favor, sign the paper, saying aye? Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that, uh, this is a very exciting uh thing to have done with Bethel, so we really appreciate it.
Enjoy the night.
Great, thanks, Mike, uh, concurrent with that, moving on to number seven is consideration of appointment of special counsel. Um, I'm gonna make a, put a, I'll put a motion on the floor right now that we appoint Peter Olson. As special counsel for this project, uh, Peter had done all the work on the track and field center. Familiar with it, uh, and he's up to speed, so I'll put that motion on the floor. All right, any, any discussion? Uh, those in favor? That carries, item number eight, consideration of Bethel controlled deer hunt, uh, this is in your packet. This is uh the same thing that has been going on for many, many decades. Uh, proposal for the January twenty twenty two archery only controlled deer hunt. The rules are uh deer only, no other wildlife to be taken. Uh, parking at Charahot, uh, and hunting in designated areas of Chestnut Ridge. And this is archery only, no firearms, and the coordinator is Frank Germanaro, who stepped up for the third or fourth year in a row, is is taking that older. Put a motion on the floor that we approve this year's controlled deer hunt. Okay.
Did, did you also say per at the reservoir?
Yeah, Charahot. Uh, all the, yeah, all the, all the particulars are in the paperwork there.
And and subject to, um.
Insurance.
Insurance. Yes, subject, well, yeah, I'm, I'm, let me, let me. I would say subject to insurance and subject to final review by the town attorney. Okay, all right, still second, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, I don't think, I don't think they're getting insurance. That's the whole point of doing the indemnification in the, and there's no insurance.
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry, my mistake, they did change that. It says, in lieu of providing insurance, we will require each participant to execute a release and indemnity agreement, as we have done since two thousand and seven, that's that's correct.
You know, i- if you don't mind, it's been a while since I've seen any of those. Maybe you could, uh, when, when uh Dean or whoever contacts Germanero, ask him to send me a copy of that indemnification. I wanna make sure it's still the same one that we we discussed before, that's all.
Okay. Very good.
I I think he needs to look at that. Uh, so just basically, they're insuring themselves from each other, what if there was someone else on the property? Is that covered under that? I think they they have to sign a form. Watering around on the property and they got shot.
Oh, they, they sign an indemnification form and that they're responsible if they injure anybody else or themselves. I had spoken before to uh. Bill Guerrero, our insurance agent about this a couple of years ago, and he indicated that even if we've got the waivers. And what would happen is, the town, if somebody tried to sue the town, they would still step into the picture and defend the town.
All right. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor? Aye. That motion carries, uh, now, before we go on to the last item, I'm gonna add one item. Um, which is, which will just take a minute, uh, so I'm gonna pick, put a motion on the floor to add this item eight. Be acceptance of D E C D grant for Clark Park, sir, second? Okay, those in favor? All right, okay, so what this is, uh, the. State of Connecticut through the Department of Economic and Community Development, after many years of very, very diligent work by. Our E D C commissioned by Janice Christiane. Uh, finally, uh, we got a grant on the Bond Commission Agenda and it was approved. A week ago last Friday, so the town of Bethel will receive a grant in the amount of six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. Which will be, uh, which is targeted to extend Trobridge Drive and be able to sell the the remaining four lots. Up there, which will increase uh Bethel's tax base quite significantly. Um, so what we need tonight is a is a resolution. Uh, that the Board of Selectmen approves acceptance of the grant and in, um, indicating. indicates that it will be targeted for that project. So I'll put a motion on the floor that, that we, we resolve to accept the grant and that one hundred percent of the grant funds will be targeted to the improvement of Clark Park as stated. Okay.
So that's not the total cost of.
No, the total cost is estimated to be about one point two million, and we expect to realize one point six million in the sale of the property, the four properties.
This is the six thirty seven, we do just extended, put water and sewer?
Yep, to build the road, put water sewer and conduit.
Hey, Matt, I think I, I feel awful having to say this, but I think you need to have a town meeting to accept this grant because the town is kicking up six hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, we have to, yeah, we have to do that part separately. Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, you're right. At the next meeting on the seventeenth, we have to do that, forward it to the Board of Finance and establish a town meeting date. Correct. Tonight, we were just gonna do the acceptance of the grant in the resolution. Okay, so any other questions?
No.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So I'll sign the resolution form tomorrow on that. So we still have some more work to do. Now, moving on to item number nine, I see John Shay has joined us. And Brad has joined us. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this has to do with a.
I don't know who Kendra Baker is, but.
She's a reporter with the News Times.
Right, so that will need to go.
Yeah, so, right. So what this is, is there is an adjustment to a contract, the labor bargain agreement that we approved some months ago, but this has to be discussed in executive session. So I'm gonna make a motion that we enter executive session inviting in Marty Lawler, the town attorney, Dion Craig, the recording secretary, Brad Herring, the deputy comptroller, and Labor Attorney John Shay, and Kendra will have to put you in the waiting room until after the executive session. So is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will enter executive session at seven fifty two and then we'll come back. When we're done, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll shut the door. Great, thank you. Okay, so John.
Are you still recording or not?
No.
Oh, wait a minute. I think she shut it off. You shut it off.
Are we still recording?
It is currently still recording.
I went to close the door. Can you just?
Okay, so we are exiting executive session at eight oh three P M, and I am going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the tentative agreement with local four two five, unit forty five, Bethel Police Department Dispatchers Union as presented.
Second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? And hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
Vote.
Okay. Two ayes, one nay, the motion carries. And that concludes our agenda. Thank you very much. It's, I have to say, it's good to be able to look people and be hiding. Yeah, it's very nice. So all I have to say the motion to do is your. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. John, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
The presentation on the turf field went a little bit longer than I thought, so thanks for anything there.
It was fascinating though.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Marty.
Good night.